Good evening, welcome to the February 6, 2019 zoning board of appeals meeting. This meeting is being audio and video recorded per the open meeting laws of the state of Massachusetts. Tonight, we have a couple of, we have one public hearing, we have a couple of continuations. At this time, I'm going to ask Mike Colisa to do the first continuation, and I'm going to recuse myself from the first one. Mike, would you do, take care of Six Hill Street?
Be glad to. Is there a date certain that we're going to continue?
I hear Mike.
Okay, oh, there it is, you got it all ready for me, so that's...
Got it ready.
Three...
Six.
Three, six. Okay, I move to, excuse me. I move to continue the public hearing for Six Hill Street Appeal to three, six, nineteen, at seven fifteen PM here at the Norfolk Town Hall.
Second. Actually, Mike, you're not, you're actually reading it, someone has to make the motion for you, you don't make the motion, right? You're doing the, you're actually asking for a motion. You're asking for the motion, so Joe...
I thought you asked, I thought you asked me for the motion.
No, you're, you're actually...
I'm the chair.
Oh, you gave me the chair!
You're the chair for the first one, because I'm recusing myself.
Oh, okay, I thought you were asking me for the motion.
Don't worry, we're just practicing a little bit here, we don't do this very often.
I make a motion that we move the hearing for Six Hill Street Appeal to three, six, nineteen, at seven fifteen PM here at Town Hall, room 124.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Mike, you did a fantastic job, I'm going to take back the chair.
Thank you.
Second on our list, we have Village Green, the enclave. Could I get a motion to continue that to two twenty-seven at seven PM here at Town Hall, at room 124?
Move to continue the public hearing for Village Green, the enclave, to...
Two twenty-seven?
Two twenty-seven, nineteen, at seven PM here at the Norfolk Town Hall.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
If the, if the folks at seventy-one Village Green, Village Road do not mind, could I get a couple more of these continuations taken care of for a few minutes?
All right.
Great, thank you. All right, at seven-ten, which it is right now, could I have a motion for two eighty-two Denham Street, Orlando's Garage Appeal? Could I have that motion to be continued to three, six, at seven fifteen here at Town Hall, room 124?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Again, we are waiting for one full member, Devin Howe, if you could give us a few more minutes, we're gonna, we'll, maybe we'll do a couple of minutes here, and then we'll get to you around seven fifteen, we're just, we have one full member missing, so we'd like to see if we can give him the opportunity. Okay? So why don't we take a few minutes and look at the minutes of January sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, that Amy just provided us with? Amy, on page three, where it says at nine forty-five, Mr. Weider opened the meeting to public comment, Dave Diamond asked about linkage?
Yes, and I think, that was the word that was used, and I didn't want to assume what it meant, I think he was talking about between the tip and...
Okay, okay. Joe, you weren't at that meeting?
Nope.
Okay. Has anyone had a chance to review it? Mike's still working on it. Could I get a motion to approve the January sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, meeting minutes as proposed?
As amended?
Well, not amended, because we haven't had to amend them.
Oh, no, okay, I thought they were...
Unless you have an amendment.
No, no, I thought you said you had an amendment, sorry. I take that back.
As proposed.
As proposed.
I move to accept the ZBA minutes from, meeting minutes from January sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
If you were there.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful.
Brief and telephonic.
Tell you, you guys are knocking them out tonight.
Oh, my God.
My goodness.
It's the Patriots Parade.
They get a little rusty, you know, they get a little rusty here.
Either we're stretching it out a little bit.
Takes a lot, you know?
We're doing it for Devin.
We're gonna work on practice sessions, I guess, right? Okay, it is seven fifteen now this evening, I'd like to ask for a motion to continue to preserve at Abbeville and Abbeville Commons until three, six, at seven fifteen PM, and that will be here at Town Hall, Amy, at room 124. Could I get a motion?
Just a sanity check, did we have Six Hills at the same time?
Yes, we do.
They're all gonna be at seven fifteen?
We're gonna do them all at seven o'clock.
Okay.
And based on the performance tonight, I think everybody will understand that we can handle that.
Okay. So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Did he say A?
A.
A?
Prove one last night, I'm still fired up.
Aiden. This copyright...
A.
Oh, my God, you're getting A-balled.
A. All right. Devin Howe just sent me a text message, he has confirmed he will be here at seven twenty. I'm gonna ask, could we take a five-minute recess? Would you mind while we wait for Devin to come, and then we can have a full hearing? Okay? So we're gonna take a five-minute recess, and we'll reconvene at seven twenty.
Yep.
Welcome back to the zoning board of appeals meeting of February sixth, two thousand and nineteen. I will remind everybody, this meeting is being audio and video recorded per the open meeting laws of the state of Massachusetts. It is now seven twenty-five, and we will open our public hearing for Seventy-One River Road for a special permit. Midora, would you read into the record the notice of public hearing?
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter forty-eight of the Massachusetts general laws and any and all amendments thereto, that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals in room 124 at the Norfolk Municipal Building on Wednesday, February sixth, two thousand and nineteen, for the following application. Ted Lambert and Lisa Larson at seven o'clock PM for a special permit pursuant to MGL, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, as amended, and Section F four B of the Norfolk zoning bylaws to allow the demolition and reconstruction of an existing non-conforming single-family residence, which does violate the setback coverage or height requirements of Section E one B, but does not violate those requirements to a greater extent than the original structure. The property is located at Seventy-One River Road, assessors map four, block thirteen, lot thirty-nine, and is in the R two zoning district.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Who is gonna be presenting this evening? Anybody?
I think you covered it.
You think so, huh? No.
I, I got it.
Come on, why don't you grab, is there a mic for you? Yeah, just grab a mic, tell us what you're gonna do, and we'll go from there.
We're looking to purchase the property.
You gotta...
We're looking to purchase the property.
I think you have to turn the mic on.
She said you didn't.
Is it on?
You just hold it.
Okay, good, okay, go ahead.
So anyways, we're looking to purchase the property, the house that is on the property is not in good shape, we would like to tear it down and build a new home on the property.
Okay.
The new, the new home is not gonna be any less conforming than the existing, so it's...
What's the, what's the square footage of the new home?
We're looking to do like around twenty-two hundred square feet.
And what's the existing?
Eight hundred.
How many?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred. And one of the things that was brought to our attention was that there is, currently there are three separate lots, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, and that before you'll be able to pull a building permit, one of the conditions put on the board, by the board, will be that you have to combine those lots, whether through an A and R with the planning board, or just obviously combine the lots with, at the registry?
Yeah, that makes sense.
You're aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. Another, a concern of conservation was, we did not, and I don't think, I don't know if it's in the package, an elevation, to make sure this is not in the floodplain, have you verified that, or where are you with the floodplain restrictions? I think you've got a map here for us. Have you talked, have you discussed that?
The property is not in the floodplain. We don't have documentation, we have a letter from our engineer.
We have an email from GLM that was written to Richard McCarthy.
Okay.
Stating that it's not in the floodplain.
Okay. Could the board, do we have a copy of that letter yet, Amy?
I can give it to you.
Okay. If we could get a copy of that letter, that'd be great.
Mr. Chairman, is that certified that it's not in the floodplain? I mean, where's the document that is not...
Right here.
This is from GLM, George GLM. So Richard had emailed us, and she emailed back, Richard.
Okay. Okay, so now item one takes care of the three lots being combined?
Correct.
And item two identifies that it's not in the floodplain.
Mr. Chairman? Do we know the three lots? What are the identification of the three lots? What identifies the three lots?
We actually have it in our packet.
It's A three eighty-eight, A three eighty-nine, and A one ninety-three.
Okay, so it's in the packet?
It's, it's in the packet, it's divided, the first, this up front is the two...
Right, so it's in the packet that we have over here, okay.
It's lot A one ninety-three, A three eighty-eight, and lot A three eighty-nine, Joe, for the record.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is this a home that you plan to live in?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, Devin.
For the setbacks, trying to find it, you know, by law, what is the definition of front setbacks? Do you know, in this case, would there be two front setbacks from Westfield Drive as well as River Road?
This is, um, is it a corner lot? It's not real a corner, it's not really... So are you on the corner of River Road and Westfield, do you, do you have two frontages? Do you...
The frontage is River Road.
The frontage is River Road? Okay. Is it a corner lot? Does it end up being a corner lot, or no?
No.
The town owns the corner.
Okay.
A three eighty-seven is the town's property.
Okay. Which would be the corner lot, okay.
This is A three eighty-seven. A three eighty-seven is the town's, okay.
So the frontage would be on River Road? Devin?
Correct.
The frontage would, but would a setback be also from Westfield Drive?
The setback what?
Would there be a front yard setback also from Westfield Drive?
Because that's already non-conforming.
I know that their plan shows that they don't violate, wouldn't violate to a greater extent, but I just want to make sure that's clear.
They don't touch Westfield Drive, right?
Hmm?
They don't touch Westfield Drive, the property does not touch it.
No.
No, the back of the property does touch Westfield.
All right, okay.
So we got a single family, we got twelve feet to one, the right side, you're moving the driveway as well? Is it, right, you're moving the driveway over to the right side? The left side?
Yeah.
Is there a driveway on the right side right now? It looks like it says drive, is that the driveway, or?
Yeah, it's just kind of a dirt, grassy area, it's...
Okay, so the driveway's gonna move to the left side?
It's really a specific.
Okay. Questions from the board? Devin?
I still just want to make sure we get that.
So what is the greatest distance from Westfield Drive? How, how far will the closest point from the house be to Westfield Drive? That's the question.
Well, whatever, whatever it is, it's gonna be less than the, the distance is gonna be more, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna approach any further.
It's more than, yeah, it's more than the current...
It's in the same corner that the other house was on?
Right.
It's twenty, she's got twenty-two point eight.
Okay. So what's on, the one drawing shows Priscilla Drive, that's not accurate, that's Westfield Drive, correct? Your drawing in the back? Is that, where's Westfield Drive?
That's from the town, that drawing, but that is, that, it was...
What, West, Westfield is the new name, I guess the, the old road used to be called Priscilla.
Yeah.
When it was on tape.
I just want to make sure that, you know, the table says...
Right.
Not existing.
Yeah, I think Devin's concern is that, you know, does...
Amy's gonna bring it up.
Do they need to have a distance of fifty feet from Westfield Drive?
Hmm?
I think Devin's concern is, do they need to have a distance of fifty feet from Westfield Drive?
I'm just trying to see where it is up here. Do you have any, Amy?
Here, here's where it was Priscilla.
So can you, can you show us on the map where we are here? Where's Westfield Drive up here?
It's where Priscilla, so where is...
It's at the bottom.
Right here. Here is the three mods, it's here. You can't see it on this. There, see, it's Priscilla, but now it's Westfield.
Right. So it's not Priscilla Drive?
These are the lots here.
Okay.
And that's the frontage of...
Right, and the home is going here, right?
It's going... From the front? No, there's a frontage of...
Oh, it's from the side, okay.
Yeah, the frontage is...
The rear corner, the rear corner of the house is over this way.
Oh, setback to this property?
Yes.
Yeah, the setback for the front is correct.
Okay. I guess Devin, your concern is this. Your concern is this?
So from what the building inspector said.
Yeah.
Can you have more than one frontage if you're not in a corner lot?
Hmm? You do, right. And that's, I think, what Devin's getting to. You've got a, it abuts Westfield Drive and it abuts River Road. Is that what you're getting to, Devin?
Yes.
Right. Okay. So I think that's, that's a good question.
It's pre-existing non-conforming, why would that make any difference, whether it's fifty feet or forty feet?
It wouldn't make a difference, though, whether or not, we gotta know the setback to Westfield, I think both are considered front setbacks. But what did the building inspector tell you?
He recommended.
Put it off the corner, the, match it up to the corner of the existing house and go from there.
Okay.
Where, where it abuts Westfield.
So then, so then the, the corner of the new house is in the exact same, well, it's not in the exact same location.
It is in the exact.
It's in the exact same location.
On, on his recommendation.
Well, one says twenty, one says twenty-two feet, one says twenty-seven feet.
We, so we didn't, we didn't, she's got a porch on hers, um, which is actually even more non-conforming.
Okay.
We did it from the corner of the house, not the porch. So hers is actually closer to the Westfield, so we're going up the corner.
So you've moved it back?
Correct.
Okay.
With a greater setback than the existing non-conforming?
Okay. Okay. We'll do, we'll just, we'll discuss that in our deliberations, okay? A little bit more, I think, okay? Any other questions for him at this point? Joe?
No, I'm okay. I'm all set.
Amy, that's for the, put that into the package, which is the.
Oh, the letter, I have.
Letter, okay, assign the copy though for GLM. Devin, any other questions yet?
Not if you wanna discuss it in deliberations.
Well, do you have questions for the applicant? I guess that's the question.
Um, the only thing I'm confused about is, uh, the twenty-two point eight feet versus the twenty-seven point zero feet. Is that, so, did you say the corner of the existing house will remain in the same location as the proposed house?
That corner. And. So it looks like GLM has made it more conforming, even though it's still non-conforming.
Right, that's how I see it.
Okay.
I see that, that's what I'm seeing.
I just wanted to make sure.
We have, we'll have to acknowledge that in our decision, I think, that that's, you're right, it's less non-conforming. So I'm thinking, we're talking to both setbacks, I think. We're talking to both those points.
So, if, if by us moving it, that five feet plus or minus, uh, deviates from whatever that law is, would it be to our benefit to move it back and make it in the same footprint?
No, no.
I don't know if you follow my logic, my logic.
Right. Do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Bob, any questions?
No, uh. The only thing is, is by definition, is that what's referred to as a through lot? It's not a corner lot. Is that a through lot?
A through lot?
Yes. There's, um. E two B, uh, makes reference to corner lots of through lots.
Well, that's kinda what we're looking at now. We're looking at, we're actually looking at it that way.
We're looking at what?
We're looking at the setbacks on both those streets.
Right, well, my question is, is that, is that what's referred to as a through lot?
It's a, it's a good question.
Yeah.
And I don't think we have a definition of a through lot in our, um. Bylaw definition page.
Well, E two B actually kinda discusses it as being both either corner lot or through lot.
Hmm?
E two B actually says corner lot, so that's covering both.
Yes, and it must maintain the, it must maintain the, uh, front, front lot requirement.
There's a, uh.
No, so I would say it's not a through lot.
There, there's a diagram of a through lot.
Yeah, it's not, I would not call it a through lot. Would you? I don't see it as being a through lot.
I guess my question is, why wouldn't you consider it?
My question, the question is, is it a, is it a corner lot, I guess is the question here.
No, it's definitely not a corner.
It's not a corner lot. I, I think you could make the argument that it's a through lot. I mean, this says, the, the diagram references typical lot types. I think this entire neighborhood over in the River Road area.
Right.
Is, is extremely atypical from, by my own personal knowledge of it, as far as how the lots are laid out. So I think it's about as close as you're gonna come to a through lot in a neighborhood where you have winding roads and paper roads and lots that are non-conforming, kind of like as a rule, as opposed to an exception.
And then to Mike's point, i- is it irrelevant anyway? Is it irrelevant because it's, it's, it's pre-existing non-conforming? You know, so it doesn't, you know, if this is a new construction, it'd be, it'd be an issue, but it's not.
Right, and actually, even when we're talking about the Westfield Drive, the proposal's less non-conforming than it already is. So, I mean, it's to a benefit of the application, I think.
Right.
I mean, even if it couldn't meet the setback, a frontal setback.
Right.
It's still, we would be evaluating that, if we so chose to.
Yeah, I think we should.
In other words, if it didn't meet the front setback, it would be non-conforming, so it would be our, just like the side setback.
Right.
We will determine whether or not that's acceptable.
Hmm?
During our deliberation, okay?
I just wanna confirm one last thing. What are the three lots?
Only ones?
Yeah.
What are the three lots?
We, actually, they're actually in the back of our package. It's, it's, uh, A one ninety-three. It's actually in the back. If you, do you have a copy? Could you put that back up?
Did you hand out the, was this handed out tonight?
No.
The.
No, we had, we had received it.
I made you a copy.
Yeah. They, the board did not receive that, okay.
Amy? We should, we should have copies of that.
On the plan, these, these two lots are right there.
Nope, so this is the lot here. So this one, this.
Do you wanna deliberate this time?
Do you wanna deliberate this time?
We can't do a lot.
So, this are these two lots?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, yeah, really helpful.
Okay. That helps?
Yes.
Okay. We only, I only saw it was on the back too, so. All right. More questions, Bob? You okay? Midori, you okay?
I'm all set.
Mike?
Uh, I'd like to move to, uh, close the public hearing.
Oh, we haven't asked if they have any more comments.
Oh, I thought you were all done. Do we need to know anything else about the structure they plan to build in terms of height or design? Do we need to know anything like that? Or is that not gonna be applicable to our decision?
I guess the only other question would be, we don't have an elevation view, so what is the height? Do you have a height? Do you know what the height of the new building's gonna be?
Uh, it's, I mean, it's just a cape, single story with a roof on it, so.
An Indian.
So it'll be less than thirty-five feet?
Yes.
Right, and regardless, the planning board, the building commission would still have the decision on that, okay, good.
Is that one of our criteria though?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it is, okay. No, that's beyond our purview. We're just concerned about the dimensions here, correct?
Right.
Got it, okay, I'm good, I'm good.
Uh, do we have a public, uh, butter?
Yeah.
We got to that point yet.
Well, though, Mike was rushing the gun a little. He was trying to make up for lost time because Devin was late, but we won't get into that. I think he was checking manhole covers and wallble to make sure that, if they were in the center of the road, they, there wasn't a lip on them.
I was probably swerving to avoid them.
Someone reported to the police they saw him out there with a caliper, I think, but, uh. Devin, do you have any, uh, any more questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay. Do we have anybody here from the public, um, who'd like to?
I forgot.
Enter any comments or concerns?
I'm just in a butter and, uh, here to support the applicant.
Okay, good. Thank you. There was a question about a shed. Is, is anybody here who owns that shed on the property, on a budding property?
Yeah, that's the neighbor to the left of River Road, so she's.
You have to use a microphone.
Oh, can you just tell them, that's the neighbor to the left of seventy-one.
Okay.
And that hers.
Is that you or?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm the agent on selling this property, but that shed is belong, is the neighbors that's encroaching on that property, on seventy-one's property.
Okay, so there's a neighbor who's got a shed that's encroaching on one of these three lots.
Yeah.
It's up in here somewhere.
Is the neighbor aware of it?
How come it's not on the drawing?
That's a good question. The neighbor is, was aware. Um, he has since passed. I'm not sure that the current owner is exactly aware.
The na- current neighbor is the current person is what?
Owner, or the neighbor, the wife. The person who put the shed in has since passed.
Okay.
I'm not sure that anybody's disclosed that she, that the shed is still on, encroaching on another property.
So what's gonna happen with the shed?
We can move it?
I mean, do, it's gonna be on your lot.
I'm not sure it is on the property. That's what people, that's the rumor, but it looks like it is, but.
Would that be for Bob?
So we'll have to deal with the neighbor on it, that's all.
Okay. So the property hasn't, has been surveyed or not surveyed? Has it been surveyed? The property?
GLM, uh, well, did this.
Go ahead.
But I don't think she staked the back. I'm not sure.
Is it on any of the drawings where the shed is? Is it on any of the drawings submitted or? I just not, I'd rather close it out, close it now than have it come up again to the board.
What if it is on the property?
Well, it would obviously, I, I assume you would want it moved on, off your property. I, is it, is it a?
Have anything to do with this zoning?
Well, if there's a building on a property, we wanna, we wanna know about it.
No, I, I understand.
It's an accessory building, yeah.
We were just told about it, just, I don't know, someone brought it up a couple of weeks ago, I forget.
I think it was Richard.
Oh, yeah, Richard, the town planner.
Somebody, somebody had come in to one of the offices and mentioned that the shed was on the property.
But I feel like it's on the town plans.
Is it a big shed, a little shed, or?
No, it's little. It's probably like.
Eight by ten or something.
Eight by ten, maybe, yeah, yeah.
Ten by?
Eight by ten.
Eight by ten, okay.
Is it, is it in decent condition or is it?
I, I don't know if it, if it tried to move it, it might.
Might fall apart? No.
Could we just acknowledge that we know we've, without any details, can we just acknowledge that this may be, but this would be something that would be handled outside of our decision anyway?
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't see it as a zoning issue, you know, I don't.
Well, become, it actually only becomes a zoning issue because of, it actually becomes a building enforcement issue is, is the shed within ten feet or twelve feet of the height of the shed to the property line?
But if it's somebody else's, but if it's somebody else's, if it's somebody else's shed.
Right.
Then it becomes an encroachment issue. It's, in, in, you know, the owner of the property can let it sit there if he wants, if he wants. It doesn't have to, but if it's gonna get financed, the lender's gonna want it moved off the land.
Right, right.
You know, so I mean, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm just not quite sure that it's our issue.
It, it just was brought up to the town planner, so just trying to resolve it, so it doesn't come back and become an issue.
Well, we don't know what it is.
We, we, we obviously, it's not on the map, so we don't have any ideas about it, but I think, I think Joe's point, I think we'll acknowledge that there, that obviously you will, outside of this, the zoning board will rectify or work with the butter to determine what happens with the shed.
Yeah, imagine to get financing, the bank is gonna want it moved or torn down or something.
Yeah, or just taken down?
Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was on here, if it was in any of your drawings or anything, but if it isn't, okay.
Do they have to get, do they have to get, um, this property staked? Like, if you're gonna build a new house, or you're gonna put a swim pool or anything like that, do you have to have a survey come out and actually stake the land off, so you know exactly where it is?
For a swim, for a swimming pool, you do.
Yeah, you, you know, and that's what I was, I was wondering, how about a new constru?
They'll have to, they'll have to provide the building department, or the, actually, they'll have to provide the department with a stamp plan.
I mean, where's, where's, they're gonna, they're gonna re, they're gonna, you're gonna record a new plan anyway.
Right.
So I presume a survey is gonna go out there and stake the property.
Right, yeah.
Draw a plan, you eliminate the three lots, create one lot, and record a plan. So you, you're gonna know whether or not it's encroaching.
Right, right. Right, okay. Any other questions for him? Okay, any, no more questions from the public, okay. Who did? No, question? Oh, go ahead.
Hi. Suzanne Peterson, seventy-five River Road. I live on the other side of Westfield Drive. My one question would be, based on my experience of the houses that are now sitting on Westfield Drive that are recent construction also, can I ask if the plan for this house is that it will remain a level lot as opposed to increasing the grade on the lot is my one question?
Could you speak up just a little bit? I couldn't hear you.
Seriously?
Yes.
From the town?
The mic doesn't, actually, the mic doesn't transfer your voice out here, so.
My one question is whether or not the plan for the, the house on this lot, will the lot remain level or is there any chance that the grade of the lot will increase?
Okay, you said, asked about the grade.
Like the ones on Westfield, like with the ma, up on the mound?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's exactly what I hope doesn't happen. That's why I'm asking.
We, we hope it doesn't happen either, but it could once septic design, you know, it might need to be an elevated system. We don't know that until the perk's done.
Okay.
So I can't, can't say yes or no. I, I hope not. I don't, I don't want a big hump in the middle of a lot.
Thank you.
You're in a well currently there?
There is a well there, but it looks, right now, we would love to have the system in the front, on the street side of the property. The well is in the rear, so we'd love to keep the well. I don't know if we're gonna be able to do that. I think the septic is gonna have to go in the back. There is town water stubbed onto the property.
Okay, okay. Any other questions for them?
I guess I can have one.
You can have one, sure. This is why we let them come late, yeah.
So, I, I was gonna talk about this more deliberations, but if we have a concern about the through lot and we don't have a dimension to that, what would be the rear yard setback? That, that's more or less my question is what, I, I think we need to know what that setback is to the rear yard that exists today and would be proposed if those three lots, or if only two of the three lots were combined.
No, it, we're, it's gonna be contingent on a building permit that we combine the three lots into one. We're only looking, I mean, we don't want three, uh, real estate taxes. We want one.
Did you see this?
You're gonna combine the three lots though?
Correct.
Yeah, regardless.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Who's, who's requiring?
It's the real.
Uh, town planner.
Well, this was their minimum requirement, yes. I mean, they, they will not get this.
Twenty-seven.
It'll be, it'll be conditioned.
That's why they call it their, that's their setback.
They have to make all three lots.
Oh, I see, okay. Why can't we use this one?
So, I guess, I. Devin, you're questioning the rear setback of the existing house?
Is, I think I'm following. Are you concerned with the setback of the existing house on one of those front lots as opposed to?
My, my concern is, right now, the, i- if you take the existing house to the existing lot today, setback to River Road is seventy-five plus or minus feet. If you combine the three lots, my concern is, and what I think it might be, is the setback would now become, i- if you combined the three lots, right now, with the existing house on it, the front yard setback would be twenty-two point eight feet, which would not be in compliance with the zoning anymore.
No, it's from River Road, so the setback of the.
Where are you getting that, Devin?
Front lot is the same either way.
The setback to River Road is, is actually seventy-five feet now, and is proposed as fifty feet.
But if you, but if you combine the three lots.
Yeah, but that doesn't change the front setback.
But their front setback would be to River Road as well as Westfield Drive. So you're, you're thinking it's gonna frontage on both.
Amy, do you wanna bring that up on the map so he can, Devin can show us what it is.
That doesn't make sense to me.
So he can show us what he's referring to. Can you show us Devin on the map here? Okay, there you go. Okay, she's got, he's got the existing over there on the left side.
So, the existing lot line. So, the existing lot line is right about there.
And then there's a vertical as well, in the middle, there's three lots, correct?
Yes.
So the house sits on one lot currently?
So the existing, if, if, you just imagine for a second that the property line's there, and on this plan, the front yard setback is seventy-five plus or minus feet. If you combine those three lots, then you've just introduced the setback to Westfield Drive, and now your setback's twenty-two point eight.
Correct.
But it's already twenty-two point eight feet either way.
But it's not, part of the discussion would be, is the twenty-two point eight feet-
The through lot?
Front or rear setback, I think is what you're asking, right?
So, it, it wouldn't be a front yard setback, I think maybe, I, I think that would be a rear yard setback as it exists today.
Right.
But once you combine those lots, now you've converted it from a rear yard setback to a front yard setback.
The, the only caveat to that, that I would question would be whether or not the doctrine of merger has already combined those lots. You know, but for according to plan, they combine, so those lots are merged.
Correct.
I know, I know physically it doesn't change, but-
The deed currently has all the lots together.
Yeah, but does, does it identify the, the individual lots? Does it say something like comprised of? Yeah, at least take a quick look at it.
The first one has this together.
Yeah, see, see, it says, it says, um, yeah, um, it's identifying as lots.
I understand your question.
So one of them has the two together, the back and the front?
Yeah.
Like, and now, this is the small-
Physically, physically, nothing's-
But all of them are changed.
Yeah, see, up here it says, identified, it's shown as lots, this, that, and that, so it's, it is saying they are three lots.
Right.
But my question would be, is it, is a doctrine that automatically merges these lots together, and, and although it's plotted that way, is it in fact one lot? You know what I mean?
Currently, it's not one lot.
Are they, are they giving three possible ideas? Are they getting three bills?
You probably are getting three bills currently, correct?
You might not.
You haven't bought it yet, you're gonna buy them.
We are on this property, we're not gonna buy it if we can't build a house up that-
They're right, I imagine, so currently, there must be three tax bills out there, currently?
So, if that scenario, we have the current owner combining three lots-
Yeah, they, they put all this little corner at the end of it like that.
Just got one lot, and that gets us around.
I see what you're saying.
But you, I think Bob's question was, you're getting three, there's three tax bills currently, correct?
We have no idea.
We have no idea, we don't own the property.
The understanding is that these three lots will could be combined to make one new lot.
Yeah, right, sure, sure.
That will be what will happen.
And I'm not, and I was wondering, only to address Devin's issues, I was wondering if, in theory, they're already, they're already merged.
No.
And I guess to the point that was just floating around, presupposing you condition your purchase of this property on the current owner combining the lots and transferring one lot to you, is that what, if that, you will then have one lot with an existing non-conforming structure on it, if you are going to keep all of the same setbacks, or in fact reduce one of them, so it's less non-conforming?
That might be another way, that might be another way.
There you go. I mean, it's, it would be one lot that's existing non-conforming, but they are buying a structure on one lot that's an existing non-conforming. I think she's just combined the lots.
Cause as, as soon as, I, I think if you combine that back lot, as soon as you combine that back lot, that becomes more non-conforming than it exists today.
There's, I don't think there's anything preventing the existing owner from creating one lot. So she's got one lot at that point, sells us the property, and this is not an issue.
It's two lots right now, actually.
But I, I think-
It's two lots?
It's two lots right now. A one ninety-three and A three eighty-eight are on one lot right now. It's only, it's two tax bills. I believe that's already recorded with the registry deeds.
Which lots, sorry?
Yes, lots, lots, yeah, A one ninety-three and lot three eighty-nine are already one lot, per the registry deeds.
And the house is on?
And the lot, the house is existing on A thirty-eighty-eight and A ninety-one is one lot, is where the existing structure is. So the only thing they're gonna be combining is adding in A three eighty-nine.
And they have this extra combined plot.
So you're saying A one ninety-three and A three eighty-eight are on the same lot currently?
No. They're on a deed.
Right, and the house is on-
Four thirty-three and three eighty-nine are on the same.
So we already technically have a through lot, existing with a pre-existing non-conforming structure on it.
Yeah, there's only two tax bills right now.
How, how do you, there's only two tax bills? Did you just look it up on the assessors?
Excuse me?
Website, you're saying-
There's only two tax bills right now, that's what she pays. Lot, it's, it's addressed sixty-nine and seventy-one River Road, and per the registry deeds, Norwalk County Registry Deeds, there are, there's already a deed registered for the two lots.
She's the realtor.
Okay.
So the lot numbers are four thirteen thirty-nine and then four thirteen thirty-eight are the two lot numbers. I have those from the town, too.
Okay.
So just to clarify, right now, lots, A one ninety-three, as well as lot A three eighty-nine are combined, and lot A three eighty-eight that contains the existing house is not part of that three, part of, part of that.
And you're gonna, you're gonna buy both lots?
Correct.
Tear down the house on A three eighty-eight and build a new house that's going to sit on A three eighty-eight and A three eighty-nine?
Yes.
Correct?
It would definitely spill over into the other, the house would definitely spill over into that.
Yes, so it's A three eighty-eight, A three and eighty-nine, okay.
And Devin's, Devin's point is that suddenly we have a front yard setback issue on the other street.
Can a property have two front, front, is, is that the through lot that you guys were talking about?
Yeah, yeah, it can. But again, it, 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 it's, it's non-conforming already, so it would just be identified on the map what the requirement is, cause he's still gonna, they're still going to come in with the same request. You know, that they're gonna, they're gonna state that the, that the front setback, the rear, the, I guess we'll call it, the, the front setback should be fifty, the rear setback should be fifty, it's only going to be twenty-seven. It's only, it's actually twenty-seven, and it's only gonna be, it's gonna be twenty-seven, so it's not gonna be the fifty that we're requesting.
And again, even if they are differing lots, I can't remember the lot sizes required that force various lots to become merged, but is there potential that even though these are differing lots, that they are in fact merged?
What's, I guess I'm confused what your concern is when they're merged. They're going to be, they're going to combine three lots, two lots to make one lot.
Well, I'm thinking of those cases that we had where people had two contiguous lots, okay, and they were, they wanted to build a new house on, on one of the lots.
Yeah.
And they were denied because they were said the lots were merged.
It was, the ownership issue was the problem with those, I think. The merger issue was the ownership of those, and the control of those lots, I think are different. In this case, all three, all two lots are owned by the same person currently?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. In this case, they're only owned by the same person. Those, in those cases, remember, there was, the lots had different ownership, that one was owned, one was a trust by a daughter, I think.
Right, but, but in theory, though, what they concluded was that the lots were owned by the same parties, thus they were merged.
Yeah.
And so I'm wondering if these, by definition, are merged, and then this, then this whole issue of lot lines and this, that doesn't become an issue. It's, it's, you can clear it up with, with a new plan, but it doesn't change anything. It just cleans it up.
Yeah.
And, and so if these lots are merged, and that you can view those three lots or two lots or whatever as one lot, if you can do that right now, then Devin's problem goes away.
Well, they're showing it as, I think they're showing it as one lot right now.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, they're showing it as one lot.
That's what I'm saying.
And all, the only, the only, I think the only, maybe I'm missing something, Devin, what's, what's wrong is their legend is wrong, actually. Is that what you're referring to? Their legend is not correct. It doesn't change the facts of the case. It's still a non-conforming lot. They're asking the zoning board to give them a special permit to relieve them of this, of the front setback in the rear, if you wanna call it that.
I think, in my opinion, in existing zoning summary table for this lot, the twenty-two point eight feet would have to go to that rear property line, because that, that lot is by itself, so the existing setbacks need to be to that existing lot.
So, so, so you're viewing it as though that house is setback on, on its rear, it's setback only a couple of feet, is that what you're saying?
Well, that, that lot, there's, that house is on one lot right now.
Right, so if you drew that, if you drew that parallel line cutting right across, in, where to measure from the back of the house, the existing house, to the, to the, to the, that fictitious lot, that, you know, that invisible lot line, if you will.
But, well, that, that invisible lot line's real, because the, that lot, the way I understand it, has not been combined yet with those other two lots.
So it's even more non-conforming.
To the, the existing house, to the existing, the existing house to the lot line, which doesn't encroach that other lot, is twenty-two point eight feet.
See, Devin's question-
No, it's, it, it'd be less than that. It'd be, I'm gonna just-
Theoretically.
Theoretically.
Devin, you hop up there and kinda draw it out a little bit, so we, so, you know what I mean?
He's saying like here, if this lot line was actually here, and the line was here, so this is shorter than twenty-two.
Something shorter than twenty-two.
But it wouldn't be a-
So it's more non-conforming.
But, but the, the problem is, it, it, it wouldn't be a front yard setback.
Right.
As the lot exists today.
Right, it'd be a rear yard.
It'd be a rear yard setback, correct. So, once they combine those lots, can they even combine the lots? Because you change that setback from a rear yard to a front yard-
Right.
And the lot becomes more non-conforming than it exists today, because that setback goes from a seventy-five foot front yard setback to River Road is now twenty-two point eight feet to, or sorry, it would be twenty-seven feet to Westfield Drive. Or, I, I mixed up the proposal existing. It would be twenty-two point eight to-
Westfield.
Westfield Drive.
See, I'd, I'd like to say, I would like to be able to say that, that, well, I'm really gonna step away out of the box, but, but that these lots are merged, and although what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, but that, but that, for all practical purposes, that, that is not a rear setback, that the through lot, and, and we're looking at two frontages, and that rear frontage is no less conforming than, the proposed is no less conforming than the existing.
It goes to women-
That's how, that's how I like to say it.
It goes to what we were saying earlier, if they're gonna combine these lots, all right, these lots are considered combined, right, cause it's pertinent that they have to be combined for this decision to be rendered. It has to be, it's actually a-
We're, I mean, the, the issue we're raising now is a direct sequelae of a condition the town is placing-
Right, so, 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 so we should assume that they're a combined lot.
Yeah.
And then once they're a combined lot, we now have a structure that's gonna be less non-conforming, right, because they're gonna change what's there now to be less non-conforming with this combined lot.
Can you do that? Can you, I don't think you can make a, I don't think you can combine lots and make it less non-conforming. I know physically, it would remain the same, but on-
But our decision is, our decision's still pertinent to the town's requirement that they have to be combined, the lots. Do we need a ruling from Bob on this?
Hmm?
Do we need a ruling on this from like a Bob Bullock? So we can make our decision, correct, whatever that decision is? You know, taking into consideration everything that's been brought up?
Just trying to, I'm trying to go through Devin's, Devin's point here. So, Devin, restate your concern, just so we can make sure we get into the record, and then we can, then let's, let's, before we close the public hearing, okay?
So, my, my concern is, and it's not shown on the plan in front of us, on the existing conditions, the setback at the rear of the house would actually need to go to the rear lot line that exists today, before any merging happens.
Okay.
And that, that distance will be less than twenty-two, by the way.
Yes.
Yes, understood.
You gotta speak up, Joe.
That distance will be less than twenty-two, though, because we're only showing the distance to Westfield Drive. The distance to the true rear setback, the rear line of this property, would be something less than twenty-two, that's all.
Well, I'm look, you know, what, because of what reason, Joe?
You drew a line right across.
No, don't, you draw a line, okay.
Correct, right. So, we're measuring from here to Westfield Drive, which actually goes even beyond and into this other piece of property. You drew a line here, Devin's saying that we have to consider this being the rear setback right now.
Take the non-combined route.
Because those lots are not combined right now.
They're not technically combined.
No, if you look at their drawing, and it looks, I think it's GLM, he's actually showing the existing- Go up there again, Joe.
Yep.
I don't know if you can see it, is, the existing lot goes up there, and then it takes a right turn, and if you look at that, the, the engineer has shown twenty-two point eight to the furthest point on the lot. He actually could, to the furthest point on the lot. If you draw a horizontal line-
Yeah, I guess they're considering-
He, so he's considering twenty-two point eight, the existing rear setback of the existing lot. So, no, it's not incorrect. That is the existing rear setback, twenty-two point eight. It's not a fictitious number, it's not less than that. If you take a horizontal line and draw it across with, with this drawing, he has shown that point right there.
I think Devin, Devin-
But I don't think he's, I don't think he's not showing the rear setback.
Devin might contest that that's not showing the true rear setback.
Then it's not showing the property lines.
Yeah.
It's not showing the existing property lines.
Where's that thing?
You're, why are you saying that? I'm confused, I'm confused.
Because-
He's, he's saying that because this is a diagonal line to the property line, and a straight line's gonna be less.
Because from what, what we've heard, that lot, that the existing house sits on today, is its own separate lot.
Okay.
So you can't be taking-
So you, and that's, yeah.
Actually, six point eleven.
Well, okay, so-
So what, okay, so-
So suppose we condition this on those lots being combined, right? If we, if we, if we said, in order to, in order, in order to grant this, we have to condition this of those lots being combined, and if those lots were combined, if they were combined, right, then, then would we not find ourselves in the position we're in right now with these two images, and thus, we would not be any more encroaching?
Now, I think it would be illegal to combine the lots, is what I'm saying.
So your question, whether you combine and combine the lots?
If the existing homeowner wants to combine the lots-
No, the, the building inspector actually has, um-
I, I was arguing the other way, in that they were merged.
Yeah.
They had to be combined.
I mean, I, I'm thinking along the way that you're thinking, Bob, but like I said, that's why I'm thinking we may need the town planner to clarify that we're allowed to do that. I mean, you now have combined plots, and now you can judge this based on the current setbacks of the combined lot, but I just don't have that-
Or, or we condition?
No, Bob Bullock actually wrote, wrote a memo to the, to the ZBAC, saying, reviewing the plan for seventy-one River Road has fallen comment. The plan of land is made up from three lots, two of which have been combined already, but now, all three should be combined through an A and R plan with the planning board. This is issue when look, looking at setbacks of the proposed house, and then he refers to the building and zone, it could be affected based on whether it's in the flood plain or not. So, he has, he has looked at this and said that three lots, two of which have already combined, all three lots should be combined. So he has said that all three lots can be combined.
Can we talk to him here? Cause I, I'd really like to discuss this issue with him, where I think if you file an A and R, you're taking a lot that's, you're taking that lot and making it more non-conforming, because you're changing that front yard setback to a more non-conforming.
Can I just throw in a, a comment?
Sure.
We've heard rumors that the building, that the Board of Health is hoping this all goes in our favor, because this house is so rundown and needs to be torn down.
Condemned?
We're trying to make a bad situation better.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, that we, let's get this, there's a question here, let's get this question answered with Bob. I think that'll make a big help- Well, that's what I'm thinking, that we, let's get this, there's a question here, let's get this question answered with Bob. I think that'll make a big help in the decision.
We will get the question answered.
Which may quickly clear it up.
So Devin, you're saying again, the existing house is, is actually more non-conforming than what's shown on the drawing, correct?
Correct.
Because if you go straight back, it's actually gonna be a shorter distance of twenty-two point eight feet.
Just to the rear yard, not to the front.
To the, to the rear setback, correct. Um, one of the reasons why it's a non-conforming lot. And so your question is that, A, you've got a couple of questions. One is, can these lots be combined? Is that one of the questions?
Can they be legally combined?
Legally combined, to make, to take two lots, make them one lot, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the second question is, because we have Westfield Drive, which we're assuming is a through drive?
Yes, or is, are you, are you saying through lot?
Through lot, sorry.
Yes.
A through lot, that the new rear setback is more non-conforming. More, more non-conforming, not less non-conforming, more non-conforming than the existing. Is that correct?
Well, I, I don't think it would be a rear yard setback at that point.
Well, it'd be, it becomes a, it becomes a new, a second front setback.
Yes.
Would be more non-conforming than the existing, which is against our bylaws.
But, but, but you, you know what the weird part of the whole thing is, is that, is that no matter how you define it, okay? Mathematically, it's not more non-conforming. It isn't, okay? So, in other words, in other words, the street line is the same, and the corner foundation is the same. Okay, so that really hasn't changed. So, in one respect, it's not more non-conforming. It's almost, is how you look at it, and, and, um, and then the issue is, like, for example, your, your question of can you legally combine these lots? And frankly, I, I can't see why you can't. I can't, I, I see a legal argument that would prevent somebody from combining these lots. And, and to go a step further, as I said earlier, I think these lots are probably already merged as it is anyway, so in other words, if you wanted to subdivide this, you couldn't do it, if you wanted to. Couldn't do it. You know what I mean? So, by definition, by, by, by default, they're already, they're already merged. It's just that nobody's ever drawn a plan.
So, that, that means they're not merged, though. If there's, if there's no deed in the registry of deeds saying that those three lots are merged.
No, you don't need a deed if the registry to say they're merged.
It's a, it's a public policy doctrine. It's, uh, it's old.
You'd memorialize it with a plan. You'd say, you know, everybody agrees, hey, these are merged. Oh, great, set a server right there, stake it, draw it, get it stamped, leave it to, and record it. Done. That's it. You, and, and, but, but if you were to do the opposite, if you were to say, hey gee, I have these lots on it, these three lots, I wanna build three homes on it right now, you can't do it. You can't, you wouldn't go, oh, okay, I have two lots that were combined into one lot, and I have this other lot, now I want to subdivide it again. No, can't do it. Because, because in theory, they're merged.
I think we just need a path through how we make the decision, meaning, he has a good question about whether these can be legally combined. If it's possible, they can be legally combined, creating a through lot is what it creates, right?
Right.
Can we then consider this application based on this now being a through lot?
Right.
And that's all we need to know. And then simply, it wouldn't be non, any more non-conforming than it is if it's considered a through lot. I think we need a path.
Definitely.
You know, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah.
Cause it's a warranted question. That's why I think we have to.
Yeah.
Does anyone know if Westfield isn't accepted, town road in it, yet?
No idea.
Just on paper, and does that make a difference?
Right now, it's, is it a dirt road now or paved road?
It's a paved road, but I don't know if the.
It's a good chance the town maintains it and everything.
Yeah.
They don't plow it? Town doesn't plow it?
I don't, I don't think the town has accepted it yet.
Might be a good question.
Yeah, they probably haven't given up the bond yet.
Yeah, that might be a good question, too.
I think, I think there's enough, there's enough questions that, I think we, I think Devin's question is valid to ask the building inspector. Again, or to readdress it in a different format.
So, but the building inspector, you saying that they have, they have to be combined?
One of the conditions would have to be that they're combined, but even if combined, Devin's questioning that, we wanna make sure we verify that. And then again, how we, how we view it as far as the, is it two front setbacks, or is it still a front and a rear setback? And we'll have to look at that, okay?
Even though the whole point of this was, we know it's non-conforming and we're making it not, still non-conforming?
It's still non-conforming, but I think because we have a member who has a question with whether or not these lots can be combined, we, we should address that. Because part of what we were approving is the condition will be the combining of these lots. So I think we wanna address that.
Who decides that, the building inspector or no?
If the building inspector tells us that yes, these lots can be combined, that satisfies that question. And then we'll ask them the subsequent question as far as the frontage, to make sure we clarify that. Is this a through road, and to clarify the frontages, cause we'll be asking you, obviously, to re, redo the map if, if it is. So that we can show that there are two frontages as opposed to a frontage and a rear setback, okay?
Chris.
I don't understand, what change would that be on our plan?
Say again?
I, I don't understand, what change would that be on our?
It would just show, it would just show that, it would just, right now you show rear setbacks.
Right.
We're gonna possibly have another front setback onto, onto Westfield Drive.
And it's just an additional measurement?
Yeah, it would be a minor change to.
It's a minor change, not gonna be a major change, but we wanna make sure we get it right.
Yeah.
Before we, we do the special permit, obviously.
So in, in theory, if the inspector says these lots can be combined, we're pretty much got a green light, I'm, I'm guessing.
If he says the lots can be combined, then we'll just make sure we verify that this is Westfield Drive. We'll find out what Westfield Drive is. Is it a through road? And then we'll, we'll ask you to just re, readdress your, have your engineer readdress the legend. So that we can show that, yes, this requirement in the rear will require, will be a second front setback. Could you identify that as well?
Cause in the end, we would then be talking about two front setbacks. Our decision would be rendered on the fact that that's legally combined. And that we'd be able to say that it's not, it's less non-conforming based on two different front back, two different front setbacks. That's all. So we're looking for a path, you know, to, to make it correct.
Right, but you would need a whole new map?
Well, no, no, no.
I mean, we would spend thousands of dollars.
I think it's the table, no. I think it's the table that says front and side, yeah.
It's not our property.
They could correct the legend.
Yeah, I think it's the legend.
Legend. It, it's a legend being your, your, your zone, your legend down here on the page, which is, your engineer could do probably very simply, okay?
Sounds like it's more work for us.
I mean, we just don't wanna spend thousands and thousands of dollars on something that we're.
I would not think he'd charge you thousands of dollars to change.
Sounds like more work for us.
We've already done that.
Yeah, well, as I said, he won't probably charge you for this little modification.
I, I would ask, I would ask Bob if these lots are already merged, and if they are merged, then, um, then are we, are we looking at a through lot?
Right. It should be pretty.
If they're already merged, I, I, I don't think there's really a concern.
There's no concern.
I don't, I don't, I would say they're not merged because the building inspector has told us that they have to do, they have to be combined, so I would say, no, they're not merged.
Yeah, yeah, but the thing is, they could be merged, all right? But what Bob is probably maybe saying is, listen, just memorialize it, record it. You know, draw a plan, so we don't have to enter into litigation as to, you know, whether or not these lots are in fact merged. The way they, they did with that other land. I think it was close by there, too. You know what I mean?
Why?
If you record a plan, then it's no, it's done, you're done, you don't have to question.
I would say if there's two tax bills, I, I know you, you said it's, it's of public policy, but if there's two tax bills, there's two different lots.
Yeah, no, there's.
I, I understand that.
Legally, they're two different lots. So, these are going to be combined into one lot. When these people, if they enter into purchase and sale and buy the property, they're going to pay one tax bill. They're going to have one lot. So that's what I think the building inspector is saying, is this, they must do that.
Yep.
To create one lot. It's still non-conforming.
Yep.
So, I think, and I think that's what he is stating.
But you could have merged lots with two separate posses, like these two tax bills.
Merger doesn't affect, I don't, does, how does merger affects tax bills? Do you, can you explain that to us?
I don't think it does affect tax bills.
Okay, so if there's a merger, there's still two tax bills?
Right, or three, or four, or five.
There's two separate lots?
Uh, yes.
Okay. There, the building inspector has said, please create one lot.
Yep.
So whether you have a merger or not, I, I think is, is not important here. What the building inspector said was.
I think it would help us, in other words, I think, not that we need to reconfigure lots or anything, but it would help us to say, if Bob said, listen, it's merged. It's a through lot, we're done.
Yeah, but if Bob's, if Bob says it's not merged, they have to buy all, they have to combine all three lots.
Then we say, go get a plan.
Are we?
Go get a plan.
Then we say we wanna, we want the plan to reflect.
Yeah, we, then we get a plan.
Yeah.
And, and make it a through lot.
Yeah.
Then we're done.
Then we're done. Well then, do you understand?
It's allowed, it's legal. If it's legal.
Right.
If you can even do that.
Right, right, yeah. Another way to look at this, too, might be if, what if the current owner had these two lots that they own, it's really just two lots from what I can tell. And they wanted to make the same change to the house, but owns these two plots, would they be allowed to make that change while they still own the two plots? That's another way to look at it, right? Meaning, you know, this, this combined set of property and the existing house, they wanted to do the exact same plan these people wanna do. Would that be allowed without necessarily getting another, you know?
Well, that's a different problem.
Right, but I'm trying to say, we, we look, I mean, I'm looking for a path to make this work. I mean, that's my goal.
Chairman, I'm not aware of any bylaws that would prevent them from combining these lots.
No, there is no.
There isn't, so I don't, I think it's a moot point. I, I do, I, well, I agree, that's what I'm trying to get to. I'm trying to understand whether or not.
I don't understand why.
Whether or not they're merged or not. Legally, they're going to merge them.
They're gonna merge them.
If they're merged now, they're going to legally merge these lots.
Yeah, we're gonna end up with a through lot.
Right.
Right.
Ultimately, at the end of the day.
I think it just makes a difference.
And all we're gonna do is say, please correct the legend.
That's it.
That's it. We just gotta make sure the decision is, is, is correct, that's all, that's all. It comes down to making a correct decision here, as long as we're not breaking any legality.
Is that a town council question? If you can merge lots, that makes a lot more non-conforming?
What is giving you pause in thinking that that, I, I, just so I, I don't understand where you're.
Because the front yard setback, right now, based off what I understand to be just the one lot, is seventy-five plus or minus feet.
So, but we're just talking about the lots, so like, let's just say, let's say, they tear the structure down. So all you're talking about is just the property, cause that's all we're talking about right now, is just the, the, the two rectangles and a triangle of property. Is, with nothing on it. I just own, I, I own two, you know, I own the rectangle and the triangle, and I own another rectangle. I wanna make one lopsided arrow that's all under my ownership. I wouldn't be able, you, you think that.
They wouldn't be able to build on this.
I, I guess another way to look at it.
But it's, but something that's already there is already existing, non, I mean.
But it's, it's, it's not, right now, it is not, it's conforming for the front yard setback.
No, and I understand your point, but I think it's, I think it's a separate.
As soon as you combine it to that other lot, then you, you're creating a non-conformity for yourself. I, I'm not sure you can do that.
I think I disagree.
And maybe that can be resolved by, like I said.
That's what we're gonna resolve. That's what we're gonna resolve. I understand.
And that's the job of this board, too. I mean, that's the job of the sport, to make these type of calls.
But full disclosure, I mean, the reason I disagree, too, is because I do, I mean, I used to live not far from where this is, and I, and I understand. The inherent strangeness of how.
Oh, yeah.
All of these pieces of property are, you know, I had a house where a neighbor across the street owned part of my driveway. You know, I mean, it was all, and, and then that was my thought, was like, that doesn't seem like it should be legal, but it was.
And we've had some interesting things, before your time on the board, we had some interesting applications come in for this area.
I'm sure.
Some that we couldn't actually find a path.
And so I think that's part of the reason why I feel like there's, if, if there's not significant concerns from the abutters, if, you know, I mean, I, if, if we have the authority to make an exception. Um, and to allow the improvement from what it sounds like to the neighborhood where you have a lot of dilapidated structures. And, you know, I mean, just stuff going on that, that nobody's touching, I, I think, you know, I'm obviously swayed by that.
I'm, I'm hoping there's a very clean, I'm hoping there's a very clean path through this. I just, like I said, Bob says, if we get the right information, maybe this is done.
It's just gotta be done right.
Yeah, that's all.
Did you have a concern about them then building into lot three, three eighty-nine? Be- because three eighty-nine would have to, it has to become part of this project.
Has to be.
And then, of course, they're gonna build into it, which then is gonna create another setback question.
No, they.
No, they would then be with.
No, they've addressed that.
They'd be okay with that, though.
Okay.
Yeah, they've addressed that, yeah.
I think really just the main concern is with that A one ninety-three lot in West, the Westfield Drive. As, as I've stated.
Can we, can we?
I understand your question.
Being we have a meeting coming up on the twenty-seventh is our next meeting?
Say again?
Meeting, next meeting's twenty-seventh?
Yes, it is.
Could we get this kind of question answered and brought to the next meeting, so we don't delay, you know, possibly the situation?
Sure we can get that question answered, okay. So I think we're going to, so I think we'd, we'd like to continue the public hearing, just so we can resolve. We obviously have three members, um, of a, six members. One alternate, we have six members here. So I think in, in order to prevent a vote, there wouldn't be a majority, I think we should get these questions answered. To make sure that once we, once the lots are combined, that yes, we have an increase, the non-conformity of the new lot to the house. Um, and then we'll, we'll also address the issue of merger, just to satisfy that as well. And then we'll ask you to correct the legend, and then come back to us on the twenty-seventh. And, um, we'll, at that point, we'll have all the answers, and we should be able to deliberate it pretty quickly, okay? All right, so could I, could I get a motion to continue the public hearing for seventy-one River Road until the twenty-seventh of February? At, um, at seven o'clock PM.
So moved.
Twenty-four here at Town Hall.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Devin? No, I'm just asking, no, no. I'm gonna go right around the room, clockwise. I'm just asking you first. If Bob was over there, I'd ask you first, okay?
I'm, I'm fine, yeah.
Mike, you're also.
All set.
All right. Thank you very much for coming in.
Up.
We, um, up.
Up.
All in favor?
I just wanted to thank them. I haven't worked closely yet. Rushing the gun here. You know, anybody who wants to take the chair, I'll move over there anytime, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you again for coming in. Do I have a motion to close the zoning board of appeals meeting for February, whatever today's date is anymore? I don't even know anymore. February sixth, I think it is, at eight thirty-five PM.
So moved.
Second.
Second, he's so moved it, second, oh, second, second, second.